I'd like to call to order the Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, November 7, 2022, and the first committee is Claims.
Hi. I'd like to call Claims to order. We have one item on the agenda, and for that item we need to go into executive session, so I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session. One of you guys?
The line in car.
Oh. Did you move? Oh, you moved it?
You moved it.
Okay, and a second. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session. Sorry, I didn't...
Okay. The next item on the agenda is speaking to Ms. Patrick.
Um, well, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, the next item is going to be delayed until November 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call to Order Finance Committee and the first item is just a reminder for public hearing. The purchase of point one five acre Peter Street, nine five eighty eight Broadway. And the public hearing is scheduled for eleven fourteen. The next item is a rules garden restoration committee potential reimbursement of expenses. Mr. Ferrari, you are taking that.
This is uh, this reimbursement for the rules garden restoration committee uh, for expenses they incurred to maintain uh, rules garden uh, in twenty twenty two. We're looking to reimburse them at oh five thousand seven hundred forty five dollars. Uh, so just requesting that council approve this. And we did reimburse them in twenty twenty one as well.
Any questions?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
First this button taken with that.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice.
Okay, the next item on Yunda, you just want to speak to that? Ms. Patrick?
Um, well, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, the next item is going to be, uh, delayed until November 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call to Order Finance Committee, and the first item is just a reminder for public hearing, purchase of .15 acre Peter Street, 9588 Broadway. And the public hearing is scheduled for 11:14. The next item is a Rose Garden Restoration Committee, potential reimbursement of expenses. Ms. Ferrari, you are taking that.
This is, uh, reimbursement for the Rose Garden Restoration Committee, uh, for, um, expenses they incurred to maintain, uh, Rose Garden, uh, in 2022. We're looking to reimburse them, so $5,745. Uh, so just requesting that council approve this. And we did reimburse them in 2021 as well.
Any questions?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Hi, thank you. The next item is a public hearing, call for public hearing in the 2023 downtown Special Assessment District. All in favor? Hi. The next item is also a call for public hearing in 2023 Upper Union Street Business Improvement District. Budget?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Business of four minutes.
I have motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, thank you.
I'd like to open Health and Recreation, and we have two items on the agenda this evening. Uh, the first item is regarding the senior meal program. On the second item is a, uh, New York State Climate Action Council scoping plan. Um, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Mayor Cosby for the first item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, council in the 2022 budget and 2023 budget with money in for meal sites. Uh, been able to enter into negotiations with Catholic Family and Community Services to, uh, provide the support, uh, structure for those. And at this point, asking the council for authorization to along with sign a contract to formally engage them.
For the grant here.
I don't think council has any question to.
Ms. Ford, I just want to know the hours of operation, I, unless I'm missing it.
I don't know if they've been set. The hours, it can be like 11 to 1, first.
The hours will be, um, probably about 10.
Do you want, this is Ms. Hillary, can we come up here and speak? This is Ms. Marlene Hill, who's the Secretary Director of Catholic Charities.
Thank you for having me here. Um, yeah, the, the hours for the program will, it's going to vary on each day. Monday and Wednesdays, the hours will be 10:30 to 12:30, um, so that the participants have a chance to come in, socialize when they first get there. We will be offering some activities when they, at about 11 o'clock. Um, for 2022, we will be offering a matter of balance, uh, exercise programs, a fall prevention initiative for folks, so they will engage in those activities, structured activity from about 11 to 11:45. Then we'll serve lunch, and they'll be able to have lunch, and then socialize a bit afterwards, and then, then leave by, uh, 12:30. Fridays are going to be a little bit different. Fridays are a breakfast program, so the hours there are going to be about 10 to 12. They will arrive, um, it is at a cafe, it's at the Bellevue Cafe. So that food is going to be prepared and ready to go, so they'll be able to come in, again, socialize for a period of time, have their breakfast, have a nice breakfast buffet. Um, and then, uh, following the meal, we will be doing the activities at that site. So it will be, uh, the same thing for 2022. It's going to be our matter of balance. We have a certified instructor on staff who will be coming in to do that. Um, in 2023, we are in negotiations, and we have talked with, uh, MVP, who will be coming in to do our, some of our programming then. So they will be doing some Tai Chi, chair Tai Chi, um, and other types of programmings that is, you know, beneficial for the older adults will also be doing when we can. Some types of activities for, uh, not only just physical activities, but brain engagement, if you will, trivia, really trying to keep the folks, because we know social isolation has been so challenging, and folks have gotten used to being home, um, and are, are kind of content, so we want folks to get back out, have a meal, socialize, engage in some activities, um, and have the opportunity to do that at three different sites, uh, each week.
And this is a painted compliment, what has been set up at the Hibernian, so approaching with somewhat of an open mind, where we'll have to see what the actual level of participation is, and, uh, what the client mix is, so that, you know, it could vary depending on who comes out, Catholic family, community services, has, uh, done this number of levels, and has the, uh, flexibility, I think, to kind of handle whatever may evolve here, so that it'll benefit the people and, uh, you know, reflect well on the money that the council has invested in this, and, uh, get great opportunities within those neighborhoods.
Ms. Ford?
So, um, you said, you mentioned the site in Bellevue is the Bellevue Cafe.
Yes.
What are, what are the sites in Goose Hill and Hamilton Hill?
Um, in Hamilton Hill, it is the Hillside Crossings, and in, um, Goose Hill is the, um, or do I have this back?
No.
Steinmetz, Steinmetz Community Park, Community Room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Hillary Brand? Mr. Williams?
So, Chair, would you mind just expanding on your long-term aims with the project, and how you see this kind of functioning in the city of Schenectady?
Sure. So Catholic charities as a whole has been doing these types of programmings for over 40 years in Schenectady County, so we operate within a contract with the county, um, for other congregant sites. So that's kind of what we see long-term for this, of being able to partner with the city, and not only have it at these sites, but other locations. Again, having the opportunities to have places where, uh, older adults can come out and engage with each other, um, and have socialization and meals. So my goal is always to bring more and more and more out into the community, where the people are, where the needs are. We envision the first, uh, probably, you know, four or five months, spending some time talking with the folks that are coming out to these sites, and really kind of looking at it as what, what do they see as their needs, what else would they like to see, where else would they like to see this, some other types of things. So we, as an agency, our mission is to bring the services out to folks in the community, uh, where they're at, so we offer other types of programming. So I guess that's another advantage, that we do have other programs that can benefit the older adults that come there, too. We can make referrals for, so a lot of needs for case management, really trying to help to connect with health insurance information, and counseling, and caregiver support and things, so we can get folks connected that need that. Um, so my goal is to be able to expand the, the types of services and the types of sites that we do for, um, the older adults in the, in the county.
Ms. Ford, then, so what does your staffing look like at each of these sites?
At each site, we will have a staff person at each site each day. Um, initially, we have staff person right now, who we're able to pull some of her hours from her full-time position to be onsite to do that. We have a program director who oversees the program, who will also be onsite for as long as it takes, till we kind of work out some of the kinks and, and get it running smoothly. Uh, the goal is to hire a person specifically for this program, once we get flowing and we kind of see how it's going to work. Um, so that's what we're able to do right now, is to have the, the staff that we have on board. Uh, the food for the sites at, at, um, Steinmetz Community Park and, um, uh, Hillside Crossings is going to be coming through a vendor we already have a contract with. Um, so we already pick up food at the McCollum Campus of Ellis Hospital, so we have the staff person on board who already has the, we have the vehicle and the equipment and everything that we need to go and get the food, bring it over to the sites, and then the staff person there will, will, um, be able to receive it and serve the program. Obviously, we'd be looking for volunteers to help support the staff person there as well. Depending on the number of people at a site, um, it'll get a little bit more challenging with one person, but, um, we do utilize volunteers in a lot of other capacities in the agency as well.
So you mentioned 2022 and 2023, so, uh, 2022 is like brown stuff.
Right.
So in 2023, do you have an average of what the cost is going to be for, um, for budget services?
We put a budget together for 2023, and I think that we came in, right around $50,000 was the budget. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say that, um, I'm very thankful about this. I think it's going to be an amazing program, um, and the fact that the city of Schenectady is going to be supporting, um, both this idea of allowing active older adults to come together, I don't like to use the word senior, uh, come together for both the socialization as well as a hot nutritious meal, now five days a week. Um, so none of it is conflicting with the program that has already been successful and ongoing at Hibernians, but now it's every single day of the week, uh, in the city of Schenectady, there's going to be an opportunity for seniors to come together, so it's, you know, really groundbreaking, and, and we're very, you know, very excited about it, so, um, appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Nice to hear.
I'll move it, Colonel.
Uh, Health and Recreation, yes, I would, I motion to move, to move this, sorry.
I'll move it.
Okay, second. I think it's, okay. Mr. Ferrari? Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, that's great. Next is the, I'll turn the floor, but this is how many to talk about the environmental piece?
So this is a, uh, something that the state is considering, um, and just a resolution to support it. It's, uh, largely an environmental aspect. You have a, um, overview, it's quite extensive, uh, but, uh, the idea is to reduce carbon emissions and greenhouse gas emissions, uh, considerably. Um, that's going to be done largely going to electricity. Uh, but there is a, a major component that can impact our residents beyond the environment. The Port of, Authority, the Port of Albany is part of this program where, uh, the state is looking to really establish wind energy across the state. Uh, that's part of reducing the, uh, emissions, and, uh, it's a substantial investment into the Port of Albany. Uh, they're going to need a number of people to work there. Uh, hopefully, some of our residents will get that job, get those jobs, um, and bring some of that money, uh, to their households. Uh, but largely, it's an environmental piece of reducing, um, emissions and looking to shift away from, um, fossil fuels towards, uh, electrical.
Any discussion on this? And Mr. Ferrari, I think you're asking for the, um, council support in, in supporting this.
Correct.
Okay, then I look for a resolution, uh, motion.
I'll move it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, motion to adjourn for Health and Recreation? Second. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
I wanted to follow together our government operations. We have two agenda items, and the first is implicit bias training, President Porterfield.
Thank you. So we've been discussing this in the council, um, all the council has been agreed that we'll do it. Part of the considerations were the cost, and, um, so, you know, we did receive information from various vendors. However, our insurance company that ensures, uh, the city, that also, um, does our workplace violence trade, um, training, and also sexual harassment, does, uh, have training available to us, which is essentially free. Uh, there is a cost, uh, because, uh, I explained to them that they wanted to do it during the day, but during the day, it just doesn't work for everyone, because people have jobs during the day, so they wanted to do it like in mid-afternoon. Tell them that that's probably something that could not be accommodated after speaking to, um, council members who work during the day. So, um, they have provided an opportunity for us to do it in the evening, but then that means that there's overnight accommodations. So I spoke with Mr., um, Ferrari, and we do have, there is money that's available to pay for an overnight accommodation, which is going to be much, uh, less than if we pay the trainer to actually come in to train. So they are prepared to come forward to do the implicit bias training. They provided us with a couple of dates, the end of this month, October 28th and 29th, so, um...
You mean November, November?
November 28th, 29th, yes. November 28th and 29th. So, I mean, I'll send out an email, you don't have to check it right now, but I'll send out an email with your avail, for your availability, but, um, something, it's something we really need to move forward with, and so we have landed on that, again, with little or no cost, uh, low, a low, um, cost to the city, but also an insurance carrier that we all, we already deal with to do our other trainings. Ask a question?
So...
Yes, ask a question.
Any questions? Questions on this matter?
It's good to get the insurance company to do it, that's right.
So I, I, so I was looking into this as well, I think that, um, the implicit bias training is definitely a good place to start. Um, I know that we spoke in our sessions around, you know, also, uh, engaging as an anti-racism training, um, and since I've reached out to, um, some of our partners within the school district, um, and they would, uh, be willing to accommodate us to, do that training as well, um, as these trainers do, uh, go hand in hand, um, really build off each other, and as far as sustainability goes, I think would be a good, um, thing, take advantage of, we have a partner willing to, uh, help us, uh, in that. Thus far, the conversation, um, for the first training would be done, you know, cost. Any questions about that?
So are you recommending or asking that these, um, these trainings be done simultaneously? What is, what are you suggesting?
Well, I, I know that we could, um, as far as logistics, we put them together, um, and if we could, I think that would be really, really, um, really good, um, but I know that this is, um, someone who works in this field all the time, and this is training that is something that is able to sustain, and really be able to, uh, see the benefits of the work. We want to engage as many, you know, refreshers. Um, I also think that there's a specific, um, type of training, I guess, within this training that is relevant to our positions as a, as a governing body, um, so I think that we can, um, we might as well take advantage of that, so. So at this point, logistically, I don't know if the line could do like the same thing, but I'm sure that council members would also see the importance of this training, and would, you know, be willing to, um, engage in that training as well. Does anyone have any questions, concerns around anti-racism training as well? Okay.
So if I could just finish up on the implicit bias, um, they did give us a, uh, the timeframe is like three hours, just so you know, um, it's not, uh, an all-day training, but it will be at least three hours. And, um, in, in doing the background and research and looking into this, it's my understanding that anything under two hours is really not that beneficial. So they already have their, their, uh, training outlined, and it is three hours, so they would come to us with, with the, um, with the training that they provide. And our insurance company actually is, uh, known was for Forbes, they'd be seen Forbes 2020 being the most, one of the, um, assurance company that, that racial, that had a lot of diversity and inclusion as part of, as part of their workforce. So I, I'm hoping that the training that we'll be able to get from then will certainly benefit this council.
Would it be able, would we be able to work it out with our insurance company as well for the anti-racism training?
He said that was free.
Free from?
The school districts, free.
From the school district? Is there just one, uh, person or that supplies it, just one individual?
Oh, no, no.
That trains?
Yeah, there's multiple people doing it.
So multiple people would come in, or?
Well, that would depend on the scope of services that we, so definitely depends on the need.
So part of that, though, when, if I can speak to that, part of that is that they come and kind of talk to the council and say, you know, kind of get our idea of what needs to happen, so they think, so it's sort of like interview process.
Sure.
So then they can, then they would take the training and make sure that the training is specific to what, what was identified.
Yeah, due to the nature of this type of training, it's really important that you're responsive, right? So, um, you don't want to just come and say, I mean, there's some pretty basic, you know, shared concepts and understandings and definitions that, you know, are just kind of universal things, but really, what you want to do is you really want to make sure that your training is, is kind of responsive to the group in front of you, so it's more relevant, and we can actually apply our practices.
So would there be like a questionnaire prior to us getting a team in to speak with us, or, or would they come in, speak with us, and then go from there?
Well, I, I, uh, I, I'm not sure how they would want to do that, um, in, in my experience, what I do is I come in, I meet with whatever group, or at least some representatives of the group that I'd be working with, and then kind of get, you know, ask them some pretty basic questions, just to, around need, um, you know, commitment, you know, what is, you know, where are there any special areas that you think that, you know, have kind of risen to, kind of concerned that we need their dress, you know, so I'm so, 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 it really depends.
And I think we move forward with the implicit bias training. As far as any racism training, I think we should look at a variety of different vendors if we go down that road and get through the three hours first. Uh, that's a big, uh, time commitment to, uh, in one evening, that's a...
Some of these meetings have been three hours, so.
And we all know how we are after those three-hour meetings, so, and, uh, so I think we get through that and look at various vendors and who might be able to do training, and see about moving forward on that.
Yeah, and we all want to make sure that, also, the cost is something we always want to keep in mind, and I don't want to diminish, you know, you know, we had a little levity here, but I want, just to reiterate that there's, this is very important, and I'm sure that as good trainers, they will give us a break somewhere in the middle. We don't break, but I'm sure they will. That's just how, that's how good trainers do it.
So I would just, uh, say, like, so as far as looking for other vendors, anti-racism training, I'm definitely, um, willing to, to do that, um, as well, but I think that if there's a, you know, if one of our community partners is offering that for free, and it's a pretty clear need, that is something that... that for free, and there's a pretty clear need, that is something that we need as a council, then we should probably add on there.
I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying, let's look at a variety of different organizations.
Well, we could, we could do this similarly with what we did with this. We looked at, you know, what the cost would be in various vendors and people from out of town and all of that, and just came back to the fact, for us, this was a little bit easier because it's our insurance company that we already deal with, et cetera. So, absolutely, that's something, you know, to be considered, is like with anything else, we want at least three. So, yeah, but with this, as it gets said, it's a little bit different because our insurance companies are there offering. So, we could definitely, you know, make sure we look into that, and we'll start with this. Want to get through budget season, but we're through that, and so we'll move forward with the training. So, and I don't think we need a resolution for that. We're just having a discussion.
The only thing I'll say is that the 28th is a council meeting evening, so...
The 29th?
Since they gave us the dates.
Yeah. I can go back and ask if...
Unless, unless, I mean, again, I know folks work, but unless we did it before council, but...
Before council? So, you want to make it like five hours at night?
So, it looks like the 29th.
I can, I can go back to them and ask if there's another date that they can offer us?
Yes.
And see if we can, but I don't want to kick this can too much further down the road. So, I'll do that. Right now, the 20, then we would definitely say the 29th, not the 28th, and see if we can do another date that's open for folks. And I'll ask, Mary Ann gave me the dates, I'll ask her to stay away from Mondays. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferrari.
Also, I guess I would just say, as far as anti-racism training, I welcome the council's support. I'm looking out for other vendors that can come and provide that training for free. So, please jump in the water as well.
I can send you the same list that I gave you.
I'll just forward it to you, or you can, whatever you decide.
There are about 11, I think, on that list, so.
So, tell them.
Oh, is there a possibility, since we're requesting it, that we all pitch in ourselves to pay for it without burdening the taxpayers?
So, I guess that could happen, but that's why, you know, that free part is pretty...
Well, again, we want to open it up, but, you know, I'd be in favor of that myself. Yeah.
So, you're suggesting we pay for the overnight accommodations that's already budgeted for us to get training?
If, if that's what it takes, I mean...
It's already budgeted?
No, not the, both biases are, are in there, but...
Oh.
Moving forward, if we don't want to burden the taxpayers with that, there's, you know, I'll chip in.
If there's money available, we...
Well, I, that was just a suggestion that I'm making personally.
Well, and service training is something that all the departments do, and we just haven't, but there is money available to it, and it's, it's an overnight accommodation. I don't know where, you know, what hotels, rooms...
And that was the issue, just because it's overnight.
They have to stay in the Schenectady hotel.
That's not even a question. They have to stay one close enough to walk. So, now we're going to really narrow it down.
I would say as public servants, I apply this training as helping us be more beneficial at our roles and duties and service of the city. So, I think, and what I'm excited for most is, although maybe other councils haven't partaken in these types of actions, I think this is very revolutionary in our city, where this can potentially be something that's annually. So, I look at the benefits of this long-term for future councils and how we are taking monumental stuff and making sure that there might be various trainings that are required of council members to make sure that we are most beneficial at our roles in the city. So, I'm excited for that. I think with that point, I would say it should be a budget item within the city, but definitely how I view this is this is making our work more impactful for the city.
With that in mind, we could potentially piggyback with the police department, since there's 60,000 in the budget, so that might actually be a, quite a beneficial thing for everybody.
Piggyback back, what does that mean? Like, we train all together?
Do the training.
Well, I, I think, I think I've said this before, and I'd like to repeat that, I'd like that training that, that just like increases the numbers, which means there's less interaction, all that. This training, we talked about for the council before, for this particular, I would like us to stay focused on that.
I wasn't talking about the implicit bias.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. All right.
You're saying anti-racism.
They already, yeah, they, they already have it in their budget.
Right. They haven't said it.
So, we could piggyback with that and be beneficial, I think, for everybody.
I would, I would say, anti-racism training, the same as implicit bias training, that we should probably make sure that we're doing it in a way that is relevant to our jobs and duties. And I haven't seen the anti-racism training that happens with the police, but I would imagine, because I did go to the implicit bias, fortunately, I was able to look at some of that. So, I would imagine that some of that content is going to be specific to the nature of the job that you're doing. So, with that said, I think that we also should focus on the council, as we've done the same if we were implicit bias, should have anti-racism training. Any further questions, discussion? Okay.
Sounds good. I'll send you an email.
So, we'll move on to our next agenda item, and I was going to have the mayor.
It's an item that would require executive sessions, contract negotiations, hold it to the end when we go in for property sales.
Okay, so at that time, I would like to recess the government operations.
So, move on.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We recess.
Right, I'd like to follow up on the city development and planning. We have seven items on the agenda. The first item is to award bid contract for Schenectady Park Connector Trail, wayfinding, and signage to W.S. Fine Design Company. Amount of 31?
Seven.
Seven amount?
Oh, yeah. Thirty-one thousand. So, this was a complicated project for us to do, not in implementation, but just kind of in the bidding process. It's a small project, it's a little, you know, tough, who do you, how do you use it? What's the cost going to be? Do you bid it? Do you get quotes? So, the safest thing was to bid it. We did put it together as a bid. We only got one response. I did talk with some locals. As it was a bid and not a price, they found it a little cumbersome to go through our bid processes. There are smaller shops that don't usually have bond requirements and things like that. So, we got the one bid from W.S. Signs out of Springfield, Massachusetts. The price is right where we kind of expected to be talking to other vendors. We have not worked with them, but given the, kind of the elementariness of the project, we'd like to recommend that we move forward with it and try to get things moving for either late fall or early spring. We're doing this project in cooperation with the county and Metroplex. It is kind of a half-and-half tourism project and local project because it's just about linking downtown and the parks to each other. So, we're going to start at the Dog Park and Central Park, and we're going to end at the Vale Entranceway. And then the goal is going to be, when we complete our Franklin Street cycle track, that we're going to take this type of signage and move it all the way down to J Street. And then that way, we create the J to Central Park corridor, and we're going to expand off of that.
So, you said that, you said that we had only, you said that bid, that only one?
One bid. Because it was a bid, in retrospect, I mean, this is hindsight, but I don't want to, I don't want to punish in a way the company for going through the work and doing the bid, but in retrospect, if the cost was under 35,000 and we knew that from the get-go, we could, under our purchasing policy, get three written quotes. But we thought the bid was the safest, and we had the estimate somewhere between 30 and 50.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question?
That's it.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is discussion. It starts with me, anti-litter program, anti-litter action plan follow-up.
Sure. So, just to keep this on the forefront, to try to move through some pieces that may, may not be as controversial. Just looking to see if the council would agree to authorize the mayor to do certificates as we have, for example, this is an example on page 69, with businesses to encourage them to keep up their property, to get the litter picked up on their properties, try to put garbage cans out there, and move forward to try to systematically go through some of the easier parts before we get to the more difficult parts, and authorize the mayor to do that. So, that way, we're all engaged with this as a council as well as an administration.
Do we really need to authorize the mayor to do that? So, Mayor, you can speak to this probably a little bit more because it started...
For this project, I wouldn't do it just by myself. I'd want all the city council to sign the certificate, too.
You want, just like, you do the resolutions, you want us all to sign it? Okay.
Well, how do we do something that's a little bit fancy, you know, that people take a little bit of pride in and become part of the message?
Yeah, but my question is, do we need to, like, authorize you to do that?
I think you can maybe do it informally.
My only, oh, sorry.
Mr. Ferrari?
I apologize. My only thinking was if we all got on board, it shows that we're all committed to trying to tackle this, and that was my only thinking on that. We certainly don't need to authorize the mayor, but it would be, I think, a show that we're on board trying to get the city cleaned up.
Well, Ms. Patrick?
I was going to say that in terms of, you know, we've been getting a lot of positive feedback about this plan, and every time that somebody reaches out to me, I send it out to them and get their feedback, you know, to the plan, et cetera. And across the board, people are really interested in this idea of what can the businesses do, and how can we support the businesses in their own storefronts, especially our smaller businesses, in having a part and playing a role in cleaning up, cleaning up the city. So, I think that's a good, I do think that this is a good, kind of easy start to some of the other recommendations that are in the plan.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I think all of us, I mean, myself, I think all of us are concerned about the litter of the city, and we have, all of us receive a fair share of concern from residents, from business, and things like that. And I think when this initially came out, I think it was more of an educational drive to, to work on that component towards the resident, towards business, and things like that. So, I think we should, you know, continue that component, or we build on the educational component of this outreach here. And we can authorize the mayor, the executive officer, so I don't think we can, we can do that, but we need to just work on, I know it's set out originally, educational component, and all of us can help in terms of driving that message toward new, to residents, and everybody getting involved.
I like the idea, Mayor, of, if there's going to be a fancy certificate that we all sign it, I think that's, that shows the commitment of all, all council members. So, I guess you'll be designing it?
We'll find some fancy frames, too.
Oh, okay. Okay. Mr. Williams?
I also think it's important to be realistic, and that there's a lot of different, like, trends that go around, and I absolutely, like, love the thought of anti-littering being a trendy topic in the city. I think it also is important for us to recognize that there may be individuals that do pledge and unfortunately either fall by the wayside or don't continue to enact that belief of making sure you're picking up your trash and where you're keeping your area clean. So, I have to put a thought or consideration to how to remedy those types of issues or address people that may be falling by the wayside in a productive manner, so that we still have like a thousand pledges in the city. So, clear?
It's on page 68.
Yeah. I mean, those are really good points, and that's why I think the accountability issue is definitely, and how do we hold people accountable, people and businesses accountable? So, there are different, it's not just 68, it actually starts on 66.
Yeah, there's a few.
The laws and the enforcement piece of the proposal has a number of different recommendations.
I would just say for some of the listeners that might have had an opportunity to review this, if you could just highlight the important three.
Sure.
So, to collaborate and communicate with Schenectady businesses that have perpetual litter and trash issues and violations. So, just some easy ways is maybe take some pictures of the litter on the business property, speak nicely to the owner, the manager of the business. You could even send a letter with the picture, asking, you know, how can residents help? How can the city help? Make an appointment to meet with the business owner or the manager, ask them how we can work together to educate customers to stop littering, which is part of the certificate aspect. Offer to provide educational materials such as posters for posting in prominent places in their establishment. Follow up with good news if they, you know, get less litter, or with bad news if there's continued litter. And if bad news, it, it would be a fine from the city. And this pledge would be their commitment of, it starts with me, of trying to address this issue. So, it's kind of a incremental process of easing people into, hey, we need to take pride in our business and keep it clean.
And I think that there's that combination and that balance of incentive and positive feedback with the idea of, unfortunately, you know, holding folks accountable if they don't continue to meet the pledge that they've, that they've taken.
So, who would do the work? What, what department is this going to be, would this be assigned to?
Well, I think that's a decision...
Well, the general, it was on the Office of General Services, you know, police and code enforcement are part of it. And a fully citywide campaign, you got to outreach into neighborhood groups, talking about going into the schools, educating some of the kids and stuff in terms of recycling and benefits on it. So, you've got, you know, a broad-based engagement. Where it starts with me, hopefully, people take care of the problem themselves, and we don't have to use city resources on it. It's really the ideal scenario. But the reality is, there's going to be some balance where, yes, you know, city crews are going to have to play some role in it, whether it is, hopefully, it's a constructive engagement as opposed to having to fine people or cite them for, you know, poor choices that they're making.
Ms. Patrick?
I'll follow up to that. I did ask Mr. Lafont for his feedback, as you had requested. He absolutely, you know, was very enthusiastic about the plan, definitely, like the rest of us, thinks that the educational aspects and especially the aspects around behavioral change, whether it's young people, adults, businesses, et cetera, are going to be really important. He did make a suggestion of possibly a nuisance officer might be somebody that could be like a spokesperson almost and really kind of talk about the city's litter, litter campaign as we move forward. The other piece of this is, we do have a virtual meeting set up with some members of the school district, who, I went through Dr. Cotto, and he has several people that are meeting with us, I think, next week. I can't remember now what the date of it is, but we'll be doing that virtually to start talking about some of the educational aspects that are in the plan, and how, how we can partner with the school district on many different aspects of this. So, that's, that's coming up as well. We'll be able to update you that, about that after we have a meeting.
Of course.
Yes, I was fine, Mr. Williams.
Ms. Patrick just mentioned that their meeting setup would be, since all the city council members and mayor are involved, no, I think it would be wise if all the council members are invited to these meetings, because meetings are happening, and only selected a city council member are invited. So, I would like to see everybody invited, since we're all part of it, though.
Sure, I can send out the date and the time, and it's a virtual meeting, so it's Teams, I can't remember. Could be Zoom, could be WebEx, but I'll send it out to all council.
Could be all of them.
Could be all of them. I get confused these days.
Ms. Ferrari?
So, this is good stuff, number one. I think that this is, and I love the educational component of this. I guess my question is, we talked, probably, you were saying that, you know, just, you know, certain businesses who seem to have a problem with litter, I would just caution us to, you know, have a really broad brush with this, and like, this is something that we want all of our businesses, all of our residents, especially that being that there's kind of some graduated interventions, it looks like that will happen. I would be really mindful that we don't want to, to appear like we're selecting certain businesses for certain reasons. We just want to make sure that we do it in a broad way, that everyone is, has an opportunity to participate in this. way that everyone is, gets an opportunity to participate in this space.
Yeah, that's what we would like.
Every single business in the city.
But when they come up with their annual renewal, we used to bring the businesses in here. I now go with fire chief, police chief, representative law department, code enforcement out to the stores. And we walk through, look at the police calls, look at the other, uh, calls for service. I want, I tell them this, I want them to view the city as a partner. I want an adversarial relationship. And once the place is cleaned up, there are a couple of places that I have told without question, they're pigsty's. They are an embarrassment. Other ones, most people, they understand that. They want their business to be good, they want it to be attractive, they want to pick it up. There's some that I question their business model and maybe why they're in business. Your point is well made and I don't ever want to project that image where people feel that it's adversarial or being, uh, treated at different levels. I want people to, uh, again, be successful, make money here and add value within the neighborhoods and, uh, again, I tell them to see the city staff as partners.
Mr. Mulder?
Yeah, this brought it back to when we were discussing it last time. Uh, we did mention about the nuisance ticketing that was passed a couple of years ago and there was some misuse with, uh, ticketing. And I, it just reminds me that, um, I'd asked Mr. Colton to look into it and to see what is needed for the police department, your office. But I'm always involved to see that we need to drive that back at the same time to, to move forward with the ticketing aspect, the nuisance ticketing aspect of that, uh, combined with, uh, the educational component of it also. So that's a thing, if you, if you know you have some time, please, um, fit us in and, uh, see where we can land that as we move forward.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously.
Go ahead.
One of the, uh, issues that we've had, I think, is, well, first, you know, being on the same page as the police department and, you know, the law department being on the same page as the police department is obviously of great significance. Um, and I haven't had an opportunity yet to speak in detail with, uh, AC Whipple, um, who oversees, you know, a, a lot of this part of, of the law enforcement. Um, the other piece to this is obviously how the courts are interpreting the tickets that come in.
How the, I'm sorry.
How the courts see the ticketing. Um, obviously we have different city court judges and, you know, obviously looking for a consistent, um, interpretation of it, um, from the judges is, you know, paramount here. Uh, because what we have right now, we know works across the board. To modify it, we would obviously need the, you know, not one judge, but, you know, all the city court judges to be on the same page and, you know, there not being an issue. Um, I think, you know, sometimes, uh, you know, tracking down the judges to, you know, find that time to talk to all of them. And then for them to talk internally to make sure that they're on the same page can prove to be a bit of a challenge. Um, but it's something obviously that, you know, we're going to do. Um, once I talk to the police department to figure out what is going to be the most efficient way first for them and then making sure that it complies with, you know, all the requirements of the criminal procedure law.
Mr. Bellman?
We're also going to be bringing in Commissioner Devine since he's a former judge. Uh, he might have some expertise there and, uh, ability to work with the court system with Mr. Colton as well as Assistant Chief Whipple. So their, your point is correct and we're, we're definitely looking into putting that together, but wanted to start with something
Yeah, and that's already, I mean, most we just need to revise, we need to revise and move forward with it. And as I, I'm aware of the litter campaign. Thank you.
Just one other point. So mayor, are, you're comfortable with what it's being called? It starts with me because, um, I received an email saying that the council had taken over your program. So just want to make sure it be on record that you're comfortable with it.
We're all one big happy family, whether anybody likes it or not.
So just, it's on the record, so I can let her know, but I did receive an email saying that taking it over, maybe you should rebrand it and call it something else. So, you're a hundred percent?
We, we actually worked with the mayor, so it was not stealing his program.
Well, that wasn't made public, we didn't know that either. So, so she didn't, huh? I'm not gonna, no, she, maybe she's listening to the meeting, could she? She obviously was listening enough to know. So now she knows that we're all on board with this together.
Alright. Any further discussion on this particular item? Okay, you're quite welcome. Uh, the next item is discussion of, uh, hosting town hall meeting and that's Mr. Williams.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank the community for allowing us the time to focus more tentatively on, uh, passing and approving the budget for this year, or for upcoming year. Uh, we had an opportunity to send out two iterations of, uh, dates to host the town hall at the Boys and Girls Club. I would like to thank Mr. Shane Marby for being very understanding and accommodating. And it seems that the majority of the council is available on December 1st. Uh, I know, uh, there were some conflicting schedules, but I appreciate everyone taking the time to, to respond back to the email. Uh, I look forward to hearing from the community. I know in the absence of this meeting, there have been a number of residents that have come forward to state their, their issues and, and just concerns about housing within the city. Uh, so absolutely I look forward to having this town hall be hosted in collaboration with the other council members and I look forward to, uh, working collaboratively with them so that it reflects, uh, our truest intent of just hearing from the community.
So, for us, what time?
I believe it was 5:30 to 7:30.
So the timer is the same. Okay. Questions, discussion regarding this? Mr. Chora?
Well, no, I do, so Multon Hill meeting that night, I just put that up. You were saying, I just wanted to, to mark this meeting.
I'm sorry, Ms. Patrick?
No, I'm just, I have ten conflicts that might also, I wanted you to give us to try to answer.
Mr. Williams?
And to your point, Mr. Chora, like unfortunately is trying to make sure we at least have this discussion, uh, making it coincide cleanly with some of the neighborhood associated meetings. It might be uncomfortable, but I think for me it's reaching out to them, uh, letting them know in advance and hopefully they'll be able to adjust accordingly. But again, you don't need to be in attendance. Uh, definitely I'm going to make sure the appropriate email is put on the flyer, but people will have multiple options to be able to send their feedback. So there'll be multiple opportunities for you to make your point. So you always need to be in attendance in person. You can, similar to how our council meetings are, you can send in an email.
He's talking about purpose of the floor when people want to send in particular the floor. They don't have to, yes, they can send in via email to voice what their concerns are. So, so doing something similar with this. So we have the majority of the council available on that date. Any other questions for the discussion?
So, take some of the, for us, 5:00 targeted, 7:30 at the Boys and Girls Club, education tribe. Thank you.
Any other questions for the discussion? Uh, the final four items are property sales, which we will have to go into executive session for, as well as, um, the recess government ops. So at this time, I make motion we go into executive session?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
During executive session, the public will have to leave.